We will call the Tuesday, July fifteenth, meeting of the Stark County Commission to order. It is nine o'clock. We will start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone received a notice of the agenda. Do we have any additions? Mr. Claris.
Chairman Mester, I would like to add our continuance of our IT discussion from our previous meeting.
Okay. Mr. White. Okay, any others? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. By Commissioner Marsh, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Claris. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Okay. So, the first item on the agenda, in regards to the primary focus of our meeting today is to get some preliminary budget discussions going. And we felt it was probably necessary and educational for us to discuss what actually was passed and included in House Bill seventy-six for local political subs. So, I'll have Karen address that to start.
Okay, so, we did have a lot of big changes with especially budgeting and tax statements. I used these slides from NDA CO so that I wouldn't forget anything. The primary residence credit was increased to sixteen hundred dollars. So, that'll make a big difference on a lot of people's taxes. But with that came the three percent growth in dollars levied. The unused percentage increase can be carried over up to five years and taxing districts can opt out by majority vote in the next election. So, a couple of things that I wanted to go over is the three percent cap. I'll give a great example. For the general fund, our budget was approved at about twelve million dollars. Last year for the general fund, out of that twelve million dollars, we levied five point five million for the general in taxes. So, the three percent cap applies to the five point five million. It's not capping our actual overall budget of the general fund because we have other revenues, just the five point five million that we levied. This is an example of what a carryover would look like. So, three, what it means is, is in year one, we all have three percent. We can go up three percent for dollars levied if needed. But if we only use like one percent in dollars levied increase, then we can carry over that excess percentage into the following year. And then the following year, if we used four percent and we still had two left from the first year, then we can use it the following year, up to five taxable years. So, there is some up and down on that. The other big part is we do actually have to do cap worksheets. I'm waiting for increases and decreases. But the cap worksheets, we're gonna have three buckets. And the three buckets are by taxing district. So, we have one bucket with like the general fund, anything that is taxed on the entire county. So, we would have the general fund, county road and bridge, like our senior citizen mill levy, JDA. All those are one bucket and that's how I determine what that three percent carryover is. And then our other bucket is gonna be unorganized road and bridge because that doesn't include any of the small cities or Dickinson. And then we have another bucket that is going to be Weed Airport and Library because those are the only three that don't include the city of Dickinson completely. So, we have three buckets that we're working with for dollar amount wise. I just wanted to make it very clear that the three percent cap does not apply to the overall budget, it just applies to the dollars levied. So, that would make a big difference.
And that three percent, library and the airport. You wanna go into that a little bit more than further on that?
Yep, so, the bucket with the lib, to, in order to do the sheet to determine the three percent cap for the political sub, you have to go by taxing district. The library, the airport and Weed is everything but the city of Dickinson. So, that's why it's its own bucket. And so, it wouldn't be included in all the county bucket. The three percent would be on those three together.
And the second one?
Unorganized road and bridge.
Yes, that did not.
That's its own bucket as well.
And that included the cities?
That does not include the cities.
That's what I was thinking.
Yep.
The only one that includes the cities is the first one.
All of the cities, the entire county is that biggest bucket, which has got the general, county road and bridge, everything like that in there. So, my recommendation would be we do the budget as we have normally put the budget together and then we see where we lie. And we can always come down. We don't have to use all of our, you know, any excess percentage if we don't have to. But I just want everybody to make sure that they know that the three percent dollar amount, that doesn't mean everybody just gives a three percent increase in their budget. It just, it's there as an overall bucket as needed. And, right. And so, the other changes that we had, if you go to the next slide. Okay, so preliminary tax statements, which estimated tax statements always gets a lot of people riled up. They did do away with estimated tax statements. But all the political subs have to turn into me their notice of public hearing date and time and location of their budget hearing and that'll go out on a statement instead of a estimated tax statement. Okay, so they have to have those in by August tenth. And then their hearing and our hearing has to be between September seventh and October seventh. If you wanna go to the next slide. Okay, and then this just talks about, we still have the same date of October tenth. So, everybody still, all the other political subs and everything still have to get all their budgets into me by October tenth. The county has to approve their budget by Oc, their final budget by October tenth. So, it would be that October meeting. And then that's when I will do all the mill levy calculations and, and send them out. We can be a little bit higher on the preliminary budget side. It just has to be viewable. By what we approve in the August meeting has to be viewable if somebody wants to come view it by that August tenth date. And so, I just wanted to give an overall, this is what we're working with, presentation for that.
Yeah, and I think a couple add-ons, just to clarify again. When we talk about caps, again, that's increased revenue generation in tax. We have been pretty good over the last couple of years not raising our taxes. And I think that would be one of our goals to start with is to not increase our, our, our tax revenue on any one of those three. Number one and number two, again, just to reiterate that even within the confines of the first bucket, the general bucket, that doesn't mean each department can work within three percent. Some budgets, some departments may be at zero and the next one might be more than three. But I think that's important to, because I've had feedback, well, I can't do all this within my department for only three percent. And it has to be looked at collectively, not individually, so.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions on that? Okay. Hearing none, that was for informational purposes only, so we don't need any action on that. I guess I would like to take the bridge demolition on one thirtieth up next. Todd?
Todd Miller, Road Operations Specialist here for Stark County. We have a bridge structure. It used, it's located south of Bellfield on the county line. It's the old Highway eighty-five bridge. When that Highway eighty-five got rerouted, that bridge got turned over to us. I always ask the question to the state level, why, why was that turned over to us? But it was. We have a plan in place to remove that structure. Interstate Engineering has done the work on it and has a plan in place to just remove that structure. I guess my recommendation to the, to you guys would be that we would not bid that out and we would just do the work ourselves and, and go by the plan and just pay Interstate Engineering for their work. And then we'll take it on ourselves and remove that structure. Any questions?
So, removing it, you're just gonna, you're gonna demo it or what are you gonna do with it?
Remove it completely and then turn it into a, like a, so the landowner can cross with ATV. That might put in maybe a small pipe or a culvert that we might have on hand. We had tore some cattle passes out over in that area and they're reusable. So, we could maybe use one of those, set it, it, it's like elliptical culvert style. It can be tipped over on its side and maybe that could be a possibility that way too. Or we can get by with maybe a smaller twenty-four or thirty-six inch pipe for him to cross. Yeah, and we might not even need to do that at all. So, we'll see once we get it all.
What's the usage on that particular crossing right now?
Like, one.
Okay. Basically none, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just been there. They use it just going from two and throw from their field, so.
It's been used as a cut across, right?
Yeah, yeah.
What was the engineering fees on that?
I do not have that cost. I think he's got a summary cost in this plan.
Is there a time structure when it needs to be done and taken out?
I don't believe so, but it can be taken out, I think, as soon as we get the go-ahead from you guys to do that. I mean, it wouldn't take us long.
Then we, we're just gonna scrap it out?
Yep, we can reuse some of those plank, save those, just in case we need to redeck a bridge or even put running plank over top of the existing structure. That's what we usually do. In some cases, we just give it to the local rancher that needs them, however that works out.
I'll make a motion to allow the, the road department to remove that bridge and put in either low water crossing or a pipe.
Okay, by Commissioner White, do we have a second?
I'll second.
By Commissioner Marsh, any other discussion, thoughts, questions, concerns?
And if I could, I'll give you a little bit of update on the South Heart Bridge got started.
Let's finish this on one thirty-first and then we can do that. So, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We'll take care of that.
Sure.
I just wanted to update you on the South Heart Bridge that did get started. So, they're looking to place the box on the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth of July here, so.
Okay.
Weather permitting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, let's move to the continuation of the IT discussion. Jeremiah?
Good morning.
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 Jeremiah, IT Coordinator for Stark County. Okay, so. Let's look at the, you guys wanted the comparison between NDIT and Soft Choice. Let's take a look at that one. So, with Soft Choice, you got the greater flexibility, better administrative control, fewer restrictions, especially for OneDrive and user management, in-house server administration. We don't need to put in tickets to NDIT. The NDIT model adds productivity and security challenges, dependence on an internal active directory. And when we do administrative tasks, they have to be done through NDIT's ticket system. So, it's kind of a, kind of taking the, the management of the office server out of our hands. As far as the prices go, looking at four twenty-eight seventy-seven for the Soft Choice solution and four seventy-three thirty for the NDIT solution. Now, the contract. Contract with the, the Soft Choice was chosen to be contract with the state of North Dakota to manage licensing, support state agencies and provide dedicated support and better administrative control. The contract goal is to ensure proper licensing, achieve cost savings through consolidated purchasing, apply discounts for state entities, streamline software development procurement, provide high-quality customer service support by providing dedicated support contract, contact through the contract. Because of this, our grant was awarded without bids and therefore to change the vendor for migration or training would require a modification to the grant starting bid process. This contract ensures Soft Choice will maintain its pricing schedules within the boundaries of the contract for its duration and any future contacts, contracts between them and the state of North Dakota. This vendor and solution are the choice of the state of North Dakota for security and compliance. Other counties. So, Cass County uses Office three sixty-five G three, G five frontline licenses with the S five security add-on, provided by Soft Choice. Grand Forks County uses Office three sixty-five G three exchange kiosk with the vendor P two, provided by a local network specialist. And Ward County uses NDIT three sixty-five Pro, provided by NDIT.
I have a question for you.
So, on the page before you mentioned something about a grant process has to get restarted?
Yes, if we, if we were to start over, we would have to go and do a bid process.
So, I mean, how does that penalize us any, any way? Would, would it be for opportunities to get the grant? Or it just takes the grant further down the road as far as getting it, or?
Hi, Bernie, uh, so Brad with Stark County Emergency Services. So, I was the one that applied for the grant, or put in for the grant. Excuse me, it's a cost share of seventy thirty for the grant process. So, the, what we put in for was, we initially put in for the licensing and then the migration. The licensing got taken out, but the migration and everything is part of the grant. And that's what Soft Choice would be doing, would be migrating the, the software over. If we deviate from that, we'd have to put an amendment into the grant, which could then may, may or may not go through. So, what we've applied for currently is to be able to have someone migrate the licensing over for us. And that's what the Soft Choice would be doing.
I was just wondering, I mean, if, if we change it, could it, like, we not get the grants? I mean, is there so many, so much money available for grants? I mean, can we get penalized getting less? I mean?
So, we, we've already been awarded the, the amount for the grant. It would just be, if we were to change it, we'd have to go through like the bidding process, which, yeah, applying, you know, applying or reaching out for three bids, which then would extend the, the timeframe of our project. And back to that, Soft Choice is the cheapest that we've come across anyways. So, if, you know, if we're doing the bidding process, Soft Choice would be the, the cheapest one to go with anyways.
We pay the thirty percent?
Yes, we pay the thirty percent.
And what was the cost of that? Again, I, I don't remember from the last meeting.
Looks like ninety-five thousand plus.
And I guess that was the reason for the deep dive into Soft Choice, right? I mean, there was some discussion of whether or not that was our, the cheapest place to get our licensing through and whether NDIT was the cheapest or not.
That was my only, my only concern was not getting the grant or being penalized. You know, because it's gonna take us further down the road to get the money at this point, once we redo the, the grant.
Yeah, if, if we had to do like a scope change or something, it would prolong the process that we've already gone with. And then that's, so Soft Choice is this, is a, they're a state bid. Or, you know, they, in reality, they give us the, the cheapest pricing. They, they're in the counties, the cities, the schools. So, they, from our research, they're, they're the cheapest ones out of, out of everyone that we've looked at so far.
I mean, there's other factors here. I mean, obviously, price was one. Service was another.
Service was another.
Service was another and actual control of our own domain here.
We get the backbone, right?
Yes.
We have a contact to call if we have issues.
So, we've all had various issues with the NDIT ticket portal. We all love it. So, anyway, that, we, we forego that, so.
Yeah, and then, I would say that too, like Paul was saying, Commissioner Claris, that the, it would keep our IT in-house versus having to go through, you know, third-party NDIT, local computer, you know, technicians to put in a ticket, then to come back to try to resolve the issue by going with Soft Choice. It actually keeps everything internal. So, when something does come up, we can handle it right away. We have access to it right away.
So, are we looking for a motion to a?
Just, I have one, one quick question. So, in addition to the ninety-five thousand that we, or ninety-six thousand that we would have an outlier on, then there's an annual fee thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven annually.
And is this the, I guess, is this the same proposal you had in front of us two weeks ago? Okay.
Hopefully a little cleaner.
This focuses on the, the questions you guys wanted me to look up for you. Like, here's the counties, top ten counties for populations and cities. These are the ones that are using Soft Choice, the ones marked with yes. Of the three that I contacted, they're all using Microsoft three sixty-five for their solution. So.
So, anyway, just trying, I guess these slides are just to show, you know, that Soft Choice is a legitimate vendor here. This has been vetted and, you know, we, we know the factors of why we're going with Soft Choice.
Yes, state chose them.
Yeah, it was actually not an ask for dollars here today, is that correct?
Uh, no, it is not. As far as, what I'm looking for is our grant is gonna pay for seventy percent of the, seventy percent of the cost in the end. I'm looking for two thousand three hundred, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-five cents to be placed in a special project fund to pay for the licensing in Soft Choice. The terms for payment are full payment of the licensing, fifty percent upfront when we get to the project and bi-weekly after the work's in progress. So.
Jeremiah, can I stop you? Can, Brad, can you explain the, the grant reimbursement?
Yep, I was actually, I was gonna bring that up after. So, one thing to mention, with the grant, the seventy thirty, the cost share, so with this special fund, we would have to pay, you know, pay for it upfront and then they would reimburse us the thirty percent. We won't be able to apply.
Seventy percent.
Or sorry, seventy, yes, you're correct, seventy percent. We're responsible for the thirty percent. They'll reimburse us the seventy percent. We just won't be able to apply for the reimbursement until October because they require us to have the twenty twenty-five national, nation, sorry, the twenty twenty-five National Cyber Security Review submitted before they'll reimburse us. And that's just, it's a paperwork, a process that we have to do every year. We do them yearly. This grant, we did the one for twenty twenty-four and it was submitted for the grant. But the reimbursement, they won't reimburse until the twenty twenty-five one is certificate is submitted. So, that'll be early October. We can have it submitted because it opens October first and it goes till the end of February. So, once we get the certificate in hand, we just submit that and then they'll reimburse us. So, that special fund would just cover the cost of everything until we can submit for the reimbursement.
And then we're getting reimbursed one thirty-seven of the two hundred and something thousand, correct?
What, whatever we end up spending, we'll get that seventy percent. So, the, yeah, whatever the seventy percent is of whatever we end up spending is what, what we get reimbursed.
And the thirty-seven thousand is in advance prior to the year, so you pay?
Yes.
Pay the thirty-seven thousand January one or first year of the contract for twelve months, then it comes due again?
Yep.
And that thirty-seven thousand is not escalated? It's a fixed number for X amount of years?
Uh, it, if there's a cost increase for the state, inflation, whatever, we'll, we'll fill that.
So, it's not fixed? It's a, to be determined?
It just depends on, on what the state allows them to do, right? We have a set discount.
And it would be no different from NDIT or any other vendors. We have, you know, whatever the licensing increase ends up being, or if, if it stays the same next year, you know, a couple of years, the licensing is determined on cost of inflation, so.
The contract with, with the state keeps them from getting greedy.
That's what you say.
So, yeah, I was just gonna say.
They gotta burn the state too, right?
Okay, any other questions? So, no ask today?
Well, the commission would be moving two hundred and fifty-nine thousand from the general fund into a special projects fund. That's your ask, correct?
That is. And the IT budget will cover the thirty percent we have.
And then we would get reimbursed.
What's the anticipated start date of this contract? Is it year one, October first? What is it?
It'll be as soon as, as soon as ink dries on the paper, they're ready to go.
Well, I'm just thinking for budgetary purposes, if it's January one, it's a different budget year. If it's this year, it's this year, so.
It'll be this year.
We, we need to get it started as soon as possible. It's, it's, as soon as we can get the special fund, create, you know, that, that account created or the money placed there that we can make the purchase, that, that's, I guess, what we're looking at, as soon as possible.
Do we have any big spend projects for next fiscal year that you're looking at?
Computer replacements?
Yeah, that's.
Not any big ones, no.
Okay.
So, the two fifty-nine? It's what, or is it the two thirty-three that you want in the, in the special fund?
Well, one thirty-seven is what you want to transfer in the special fund because you say you have the ninety-five thousand, ninety-six thousand.
It is, uh, it's two thirty-three.
I see the overall estimated cost at two thirty-three, one seventy-six, ninety-five. And then you have a different amount on the board. You have two fifty-nine, eight seventy-five?
That is what the grant approves us for. We can take that much from the grant. That's not what I'm asking here. The, the grant we got approves us for maximum expenditure of two fifty-nine, seventy-five.
But you have bids of two thirty-three.
Yes.
But you're requesting the full transfer of two thirty-three. I thought, do you have the ninety-six thousand for the thirty percent share, our share? So, your ask is a hundred thirty-seven thousand to be transferred to a special account?
Yes.
How does IT have an extra ninety-six thousand dollars in their budget?
The savings from cutting our contract with solidated.
But that money went to Kelly, I mean, didn't we?
I have not spent a ton on replacements. I've gotten the ones that were important. I've replaced the ones that are broken. And I got a bunch left over there. And then there is a reserve fund in there for big projects I have money for.
Okay.
You guys still on a five-year rotation on replacing equipment and stuff?
Yes, that is policy.
So was that number again, one sixty-three?
One thirty-seven, two fifty-four and change.
I'll make the motion to establish a special projects fund for I T in the amount of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and is that the full amount?
Two fifty-four, sixty, one thirty-seven, two fifty-four, sixty.
Sounds good. Which will be reimbursed by the grant funding.
And then we need a transfer from I T over to that special projects fund? Is that correct?
We can do that?
I don't, yes.
Is that necessary?
We need, but, but that's fine, if you want it to.
And that reimbursement's this October, right?
Yep, as, as soon as we submit that report.
It would be, I'm just thinking about how we're going to pay for this. It would be better if we could transfer all of, like, your money into the special projects fund, so it's all just paid out of that one instead of trying to.
Agreed.
Split it, like, I think that would potentially cause some issues.
Do you want to amend your?
Suggestion.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Well, first of all, we don't have a second, so we need a second.
I'll make the second.
By Commissioner White, so would you entertain amending your motion to, um, cover the transfer of the ninety-five thousand plus as well?
Yes.
Okay, you open to that, Commissioner White?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have, uh, the emotion, the emotion, this is emotional, but, uh, emotion to, uh, transfer a total of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Seventy percent of that would be, uh, reimbursed through the state grant of one thirty-seven, two fifty-four, sixty, and the county transfer out of I T budget of ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Any other discussion? Harry Nun, roll call vote, Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchak.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move, uh, into our merit pay metric proposal and salary policy. Joetta.
Good morning, commissioners. Joetta Piercy, Human Resources Director. Our compensation committee of myself, Karen, Paul, and Cory put together the policy that I sent out to you all, and, um, I just kind of wanted to walk through how we developed it. And, um, we started off with developing our pay philosophy, which would be to attract, motivate, and retain quality employees committed to providing a high level of public service. And, um, to do that, we actually have made a combination of three different compensation models to do that. The first one is a step and grade system. This is a traditional model used by many government agencies. And this is where employees are placed on a scale, and then they move up the scale in steps with equal pay adjustments by their job classification. The second is a market-based pay, and this model sets salaries based on the prevailing rates for similar jobs in the labor market, and this helps ensure compensation is competitive, can attract and retain talent. And the third one is the performance-based pay, which would be the merit matrix model that, um, we are discussing. And employees receive pay increases based on their performance evaluation score, and this can help motivate them to achieve higher levels of productivity and efficiency. So, um, with that, the different, how they would be used is the step and grade system would be used for elected officials and anyone that we didn't do an evaluation on, for instance. These are very transparent, clear and predictable pay structure. People know what they're going to make year after year. It's equitable, ensures fairness and consistency, and it's simple. It's easy to administer. Now, the cons of this, um, and this is how we addressed it with, by using a combination of models, is inflexibility. There's limited ability to reward exceptional performance. You get what you get, basically, with this model. Some people can see it as a slow progression. They may feel stuck or, um, you know, based on equal step increases. And then, uh, potential for compression, pay differences between new hires and long-term employees can become minimal depending on where new hires are placed on the step scale. So what we've done is incorporated an annual market analysis for every position into our compensation policy. So this would even include those on a step scale. If their step would increase, if the market dictated an increase, they would be eligible for an increase in that step they're currently in, and then they would move to the next step also. So that's how we would, um, kind of accommodate that inflexibility or slow progression type of a thing.
Could you just repeat that last sentence, uh, that last part that you said? Is it in here somewhere?
Yep, um, everyone on a step scale would remain competitive with the market by being eligible for an increase in their current step that they're in, as well as the annual step increase. So you'll see this often, a lot of places will, you know, have the same, same step scale for like three years, and then they'll take a look at the market and they'll say, our scale needs to increase, you know, two percent or fifty cents each step or something along that line. So then people would get that fifty cent step, plus they would move to the next step. So that's how that works. And with that market-based pay, uh, that's where we developed that standard operating procedure for salary range market analysis. So that is what I used, and I went through all fifty positions. I compared the N D A C O data with those positions, as well as the Bureau of Labor Statistics data, and, um, came up with the median for each job. And, um, these, these will be conducted each year according to the policy, and the median wage is calculated by assessing where most employees are paid within that position, um, at the county level as well as the private sector. The goal of this model is that employees are paid between the twenty-fifth and the seventy-fifth percentile. Salaries should create a bell curve, and that is actually how our salaries plot out. Out of the ninety-five employees, they fall within these, the four ranges. So minimum to twenty-five percentile, only four employees fall there. Twenty-six to fiftieth percentile, thirty-five employees. Fifty-one to seventy-fifth, forty-nine employees. And then seventy-six percent to max is seven employees. So, um, I just want to stress, um, that the bell curve, you want people to be moving up to the midpoint or be around the midpoint. So that is your goal. That's your benchmark, and that creates the equity. Um, and it also creates salary progression for people too, because if you want everybody to be at the max, then they have nowhere, nowhere to go, no progression, so. The bell curve just kind of is a visualization of how that, um, looks on the scale according to their salary and how many people are at that level. Okay, the last one, um, which we've discussed quite a bit because we included the merit pay within our performance evaluations, and, um, performance-based pay is, um, you know, motivates people, encourages high performance and productivity, and it's flexible, rewards top performers, and can address underperformance. Now, the cons, which we've discussed, are subjectivity. Performance evaluations can be based on, or biased or inconsistent, and it can create morale issues if it creates too much competition or reduces teamwork too. One way that this is addressed with our current, um, policy we developed is the merit matrix. So, um, your increase is not only based upon your score on your evaluation, but also where you're at on the salary range too. So, um, and you'll see here, um, on the matrix, I have, uh, most of our employees, as I've said, are, fall between the twenty-sixth and seventy-fifth percentile, so that's highlighted. Most of our scores, we probably over, have over half of our evaluations done already. Most fall in fully successful or superior performance. So that is, um, uh, employees who are rated fully successful and are between the twenty-sixth to fiftieth get two point seven five percent on this scale or this merit matrix. And then those, um, who are between the fifty-first to seventy-fifth get two point two five percent. So that creates that equity. And then superior follows that same, same guideline there. Now, um, we are proposing that we use this scale here, um, just basically because it kind of follows the market conditions right now. The matrix takes into consideration a two point five percent estimated COLA projection for social security this next year, and it also, um, the Consumer Price Index has come out at two point seven percent. So we thought that this, you know, was a good range to keep us within that. During an employee's career, people can, you know, start off in one pay grade and then get promoted to another. So it's not unusual that they might be, have moved up past the median, but then when they're promoted, then they, they're back down below the median again, and that's normal in a salary progression. So they have somewhere to go. And, uh, an example of this that you can probably see is in the sheriff's department because they have a deputy one, a deputy two, a deputy three, which is the corporal. And so, um, what they've put in place is that, y- you know, as you progress, your salary would increase, or as you're promoted type of a thing too. So that is one thing that we, this first year, we will have to look at, um, is salaries. Because I know Cory and I have visited about this, is where, where he would like the deputy threes to be, you know, compared to the sergeants, lieutenants, and the ranking type of a thing. So, um, it, it's like, as I said before, it's the goal to, to, it's not the goal to have an employee max out on the salary survey. That, that isn't our goal. We would like people to see, you know, um, an increase each year, but it is inevitable. Unless the market changes, then the scale will remain the same, and the max would remain the same. So, um, what we're asking is that, um, well, first, I, I will take any questions if I haven't covered everything, but I will go into the process of how this would play out. So, um, we've done our market analysis, and I am presenting the salary ranges to you, um, today. In July, that would happen every year. And then a preliminary merit matrix that follows the projected cost of living and market conditions for the next fiscal year would be utilized for budgeting purposes. And then once we get all the evaluations done, all the salaries budgeted in on the matrix that you've chosen, then you will have a chance to look at a final budget and a merit matrix in August. You could change it if you wanted to. So let's say it came out that we can't afford that, then you can change the merit matrix. So, um, the, the performance-based pay and step increases would be calculated by H R. I would communicate that to the auditor for the final budget approval. And then, um, in January, we would submit those to payroll, and they would process those. Now, if someone hasn't been here six months, theirs wouldn't go into effect until they had their six-month evaluation, and then it would go into effect after six months. Step would work the same way. If they hadn't been here six months in January, we would wait until they got to their six-month mark for their step increase for that year. So are there any questions?
Nobody? Yep, a couple of questions. So the matrix that you installed in the email you sent out yesterday, what number would the county commission be approving to approve that particular matrix? Because you, you did send out one previously where there was a whole list of options, right?
Yeah, yeah, you could use any of them.
Right, and so I guess for simplicity's sake, what's the number that would trigger that particular matrix? If the county commission comes in and says, what's the X that would trigger that particular one?
That would be the, the average, so the highlighted, two point seven five, two point two five, three point five, two point eight five, that.
So the range that we would approve would be a range and not a number?
No, you would approve this whole matrix. So wherever anybody scored, wherever their salary was, you would go to that box, and that's the percentage increase they would get.
Okay, and so you would make that recommendation?
Our compensation committee recommends this table for preliminary budgeting.
And that table would be determined by the, uh, Consumer Price Index?
For mar- market conditions, yeah. Drive, drive this. We were trying to keep it around the two point five to three, you know.
I guess my question is, I'm not criticizing what I'm saying, is, my question is, if it became a point in time, like was done a couple of years ago, and they said, we're freezing salaries. Wh- what does this matrix looks like?
You, you would say, we're freezing salaries and nobody gets increases this year.
That's pretty, that's a common thing, and the.
Yeah.
This here is the market-driven, where we would have to pull the data annually, uh, as you did this year, right? Or every two years or whatever? And then if there is a, a salary freeze, this all gets put on hold.
Okay, so then if the commission decided to use some other number, then that matrix would come back revised to reflect that number. So let's say, they said last year, we threw out one and a half percent increase in, in compensation. How does that plow into this matrix? Because you have a number here that could be as high as four percent. Obviously, that's not what is being proposed.
And we only, and so the odds of someone getting that are fairly low because we only have four people that fall there.
But what I, I'm still trying to.
Okay.
With the, with the, uh, the, the gears of it, I guess, the, how that all works. So, so that when we approve this, everybody's, can't come back three years from now and say, oh, that's not what we approved. What we approved was this. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
You would approve a matrix, so, you know, all the, when I sent out, before I sent out probably seven or six or seven options, yeah. So if, if you don't feel this is the correct one, you could choose another one. If you feel we can afford more, we can go to the higher, you know, a higher matrix. Or if you think less, we can go to a lower one, yeah.
So we could go off that page with all the.
Yes.
Matrix charts and say, let's pick chart B and apply it to the next calendar year.
Yep, after all evaluations are in and, you know, the, the preliminary budgets are in, and you decide we could afford more, then we would have to plug in new matrix numbers, yeah.
So then, uh, another question is, is when we started this process, my goal, when, when we, uh, I talked about this, was we have an kind of a archaic longevity program or process policy now, right? We were going to get rid of that. And we also talked about potentially implementing a policy where we reward individuals, um, on insurance, right? Now we pay eighty percent. We talked about, as longevity of five years, maybe you get a boost to five percent and, um, get up to potentially longevity-wise, where you could get a hundred percent of your insurance pay.
And, and in this committee, we did not, we, we skimmed over it. We did not discuss it.
So is the long, under this, is longevity still in place?
Yes, yes. So we started off with those discussions, which you were just talking about, and what we came around to is, we need to do this first. We have, need to have a salary and compensation policy. Because what happens, if somebody gets to their max, then they get no adjustments. So that's why our longevity policy was in place, because let's say they've been here twenty years, they don't get any more adjustments, you know, that's kind of when it started paying, our longevity really pays out. So that's why, because they would get to their top of their scales, and that would be their only increase essentially for the year, or pay, yeah.
So when we talked about, if an individual gets to the ceiling, you're, you know, seventy-six, the seventy-six to a hundred percent. seventy-six to a hundred percent. If they just do an adequate job under this one, they would still get one point seven five percent increase in salary. Am I reading that correctly?
No, yeah. Okay, if somebody, so you inadequate, let's say unacceptable, or?
So let's say I, I'm, I'm doing, I have a, a position within the county, and I'm, let's say I score ninety percent on this, on the, the, your scale here, okay? And I do, and, and even higher than that, and if I do, and get scored at just average, fully successful, which is a three, which is average in my room, I'd still get one point seven five percent increase in salary.
If you were at the seventy-six to the maximum range?
Yes.
Yes, yes. And if you were at the top, you wouldn't get the one point seven five. You would get up to the max. You max out.
If I'm at the top, unacceptable?
Of the, of the range, of the range.
Okay, so if I'm at ninety-five percent, I don't get there?
You wouldn't get a hundred percent of it, yeah.
You're capped out, got it. Okay, then one last question. So our county has a policy, very, very competitive, very rewarding on benefits. Our insurance, our retirement, all those things are very, very well compared to counties that you've put in to your salary survey. Are those numbers counted in your survey?
We, we didn't, we discussed the insurance, and we kind of felt the same way that you are talking, is we felt our benefits were good. And to pay more for people's insurance didn't seem like the best use of our dollars, if that makes sense. We wanted something that would impact everybody, and there are, you know, fifteen handful of people that do not take our insurance, so they wouldn't get any benefit out of that. And we did feel that our benefits were, were good. And, I mean, most counties do have a very good benefit package, like that's what they, that's what they, they bank on, you know, is that people will come and work for them because they have good benefits. So we wanted to keep our benefits good and maybe not deteriorate.
I'm not against that. What I'm saying is, how does that look in the overall picture of compensation? Because it used, you know, it used to be, old days, all you worried about was your salary. If your salary was X, you couldn't care so much about everything else, but with, you know, insurance going through the roof and all these other things. And now we do offer, I, I don't know if, nobody does better than us on the retirement.
I think there are some counties that pay a hundred percent, you mean?
Well, on, on matching up to the fifteen percent. I mean, there may be others that are doing it, but no.
We make the employee contribution for them.
Right.
And I, other counties do that, too.
But are they at the fifteen percent? There may be other ones that are fifteen, but a lot of them are less than that.
Everyone, we're required by law.
Neil, you're talking about the sixteen point two six percent, like, we pay the employee and the employer's share.
On the contribution into, for example, PERS, we're, I mean, the information I've seen previously is that our contribution, the employer's contribution to the PERS for the employee on benefit, on behalf of the benefit, we're, I don't, I don't, I know nobody does better, more than us, but a lot of them.
We're covering the employee's share of eight, it's eight point something percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Not all counties do that.
I guarantee that not all counties are doing that.
And another concern that, I guess we've discussed this, is always finding out what this insurance increase is, it always comes late in the budget process, right?
It does.
And do we have any indication this year where we're at? I mean, I just met with another board yesterday, and I, and we're seeing a ten percent increase year over year. I don't know if that, that's going to be us or not, but.
Yeah, I haven't gotten any, any indication of what it would be.
I think we have to wait, because they have to see what, where our claims are at, and that's what bumps up our insurance. I mean, how many people claim on it?
Look at your experience rating, yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
No, but I think at some point that longevity does need to be addressed still. It just wasn't addressed in this committee.
I think the comment was, we only want to slay one dragon at a time here.
Correct.
So I had a question on the salary schedule sheet, Joetta, that you worked on. You have, you know, now, I know you went through and picked out these positions, right? And some of them you had to use the same pay matrix for them, right? Even though they were similar. But here's my question, like, like yours, down at the bottom, you have director of HR. What, what is that comparing you to as far as being a director of HR?
So there's the count, the, in the ACO survey, there are, I think, thirteen other HR directors. So it's those thirteen people. And then in the Department of Labor, it's just called HR manager. They just have one category.
Okay, so does being a director mean that you're over other HR employees? Or like, are you talking about the thirteen counties, there's only one HR person?
No, I mean, Cass County has a lot of, you know, many of them are larger, burly. I mean, the, only the largest counties have HR people, so. But I'm not the only department of one, if that's what you mean. It's just.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I see under IT quarters, so what you're suggesting, in this market increase in ranges under twenty twenty-six, are these what I see?
That's, that's what the scale increased in order to get the median to the, to the fiftieth percentile for those ranges. And so the IT, we, when we budgeted for that, when we developed it last year, it was, it was on the IT senior tech. That was its scale, pretty much, in order to get somebody in, in here. But now, the IT coordinator, like, it needs bumped up a level, and this is more of a systems and network administrator scale. This is not an IT director scale. It's, it's higher.
So based on this, like, for example, IT coordinator, to put him into the scale, we'd be increasing his salary by twenty-one point three percent? Is that what that's saying?
No, no. This is just what this scale changed from and to. This, this has nothing to do with the percentage increases people are getting, no. Now, what needs to happen is he needs to be at least at the base, you know, the minimum of the scale, that would have to happen.
Yeah, so he'd be in the lower left-hand corner, trying to get, and would be receiving the higher increases.
Yes, because that's the goal, the lower you are in the scale, the quicker we're trying to get you to the median. The higher you are, we're not, we're not trying to move you away from the median as fast.
So how confident are you that evaluations are done fairly? Since they are in this arena public?
I mean, I, I think they're pretty good. Each year, they're getting better, granted, you know? I think as people do them, they're learning, and I'm learning as we send them out, you know, with the comments and things. This year, we made comments required. I think they, they're getting better, the more that we do them. And the one thing I can say is, if somebody is not, maybe if you don't feel they're quite, I don't know, accurate, we do have where they are at on the scale, too, to drive, you know, their percentage increase. So if they're already up high on the scale, they're not going to get as large of an increase.
And, and I appreciate that comment, but my concern is that the evaluations, since they are public and open to public or open records requests, are the evaluators holding anything back or doing something that they would not normally do if it was a private evaluation?
Not to my knowledge, because, I mean, if there's any formal write-up or anything along that line, that's already in their file. And on most of them, their, on their work quality, that's where they would note that if they got something for that year.
And I think with those incidents, or incidents where, you know, there was a, a record of a write-up or something like that, the goal is not to, to produce more paperwork to have on that same issue, so.
I mean, your goal is always to.
And my comment isn't directed that much, Cory, it's that if I'm the evaluator and I'm doing evaluation that would be confidential, I'm much more likely to be a little more detailed versus one that would be open records forever, when they could say, well, this person did the evaluation on this individual employee, and then all of a sudden, it's, it's out there.
And I think before you get to the evaluation portion, if there is something that, a crucial conversation probably needs to be had before you actually physically write it down in that evaluation, and let that employee know that, you know, I, I may not put this on your evaluation, but I will, there will be a, a lower marking score on this portion of your evaluation, and that's just between you and I, or whatever. So, but a conversation probably should be had before that evaluation is filled out.
Nothing on an evaluation should be a surprise, because people are supposed to be talking and meeting and, you know, talking about these things throughout the year. The annual evaluation is just a point in time, you know, to kind of give an overall general. Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, so are we doing an action or asking for action on this, or are we not?
Yes, I, I would, I would like, if the policy could be approved, and then, with the salary range schedule, and then if you want to approve the proposed merit matrix or a different one, we need, we need that done today so that we can move forward with our salary budgeting.
Chairman? If I may? If you move forward with it, so, like, the issue we have with our department, and thank you guys for letting us do this, over the years, you've given the sheriff's department the luxury of giving us the buckets, because we've been the one doing the evaluations for the longest, obviously, number one, but we've also taken and we've built our staff up from the bottom. So what we would have, and I like Joetta's proposal, I think, I think it's very beneficial. I, I think for the most part, it's going to work out. But where our issue is right now is the jumping off point isn't right for us. So if we adjust some salaries, which I'm able to do within my three percent cap, I took three percent of my bottom line.
Of our three percent?
Yes, our three percent, thank you. Thank you for correcting me.
I found that one.
I appreciate that. And got the salaries right for the jumping off point where we start, and then we're good moving down the road. And I think maybe that's, maybe some of the other departments are going to have that issue as well, I don't know, I don't look at their budgets, but that's where our issue would be.
So you are wanting to stay the pace that you're at right now, that, what you're doing currently?
No, I'm, I'm very happy with going with what Joetta's proposing, but I need to adjust the numbers prior to that, and I'm afraid if you guys vote to accept this, then we're not going to be able to get our numbers where they be, where they need to be to make this a successful program for our department.
So there are a few that they would, you know, their evaluation says they get this percent, but then there might be an additional increase to get him to the step that he wants them kind of to be at, if that makes sense.
So with this here, with the proposal that Joetta is making, you may have to do some, a one-time market adjustment, right? With some of your individuals? And do you know what a dollar amount that would be?
Well, it's different, we have different rank structures, obviously.
Correct.
Deputies, corporals, sergeants, lieutenants, chief deputies.
What I'm asking for a total, for a dollar amount?
Well, like I said, I took three, and I have the, I'll email it to you, or I have a hard copy here for you today. What I did was made sure I stayed within three percent of our total budget. Got those numbers where I think they need to be moving forward to have that disparity between ranks, because you have to have something to spur you, I guess, to want that promotion and to work harder to get there, because that's how law enforcement works, that's how it worked for decades. So I have those numbers here, if you'd like to see them. I also can, like I said, email it to you, if that makes sense.
And I think knowing ahead of time that there's going to be some kind of market adjustment, I mean, we can plan for that.
And how I'm doing it on the salary, you know, if you meet with your, you as portfolio holders, when you meet your, with your department heads, all of their salaries are by person, it has all of their information on there, and there's a column for what their performance merit increase would be, and then if they're, like, proposing a step increase, what that would be, and then an overall. So you would kind of get an idea for the whole department, too, if there was any changes.
So Cory, Sheriff Lee, do you have all your evaluations done for the year? Or you guys do those early, don't you?
Yes, they're all done.
So you could, Joetta, you could kind of, you have a number for him, right?
I do, we've been meeting, and he gave me his numbers. Yeah, and I, I think his ended up being, like, just the salaries were like a four point three percent increase with what he's proposing, yeah.
Over what he was proposing?
No, overall. Like, his salaries from last year, or this year, to twenty twenty-six would increase four point three percent is what he's proposing.
Again, that's not four point three for everybody, that's four point three total.
Yeah, and, and, but I think he's also trying to make changes in other areas of his budget to accommodate them.
How does this system, this new merit matrix, compare to what he's proposing?
We were right on with most of them, until we got to his corporals, sergeants, lieutenants, because he wanted to make a wider spread between them than he currently has.
So that four point three will?
That's what he was proposing.
With the market adjustment that we were just discussing.
Yes, it, it includes the merit.
I mean, I don't mean to dive into individual department budgets, but since you opened it up, one of the things we talked about last year was the differential pay policy you have. So are you now pulling that into?
Yes, this would eliminate that.
Into all the, oops, excuse me, all the deputies?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm not sure when the, a good jumping point is going to ever be, you know? At some point, we're going to have, I mean, the whole idea was to kind of get this done across the county. I'm not quite sure how we, I, I'd just like to see what that difference is between what you're proposing and how, how this merit matrix would, would fall out here, and what those numbers really look like, Cory.
And really, I mean, you, you, you can approve this policy and still do market, you know, we're, we're going to have positions this year, next year, every year, you know, that you might need to look at for that sort of a thing. Because that's what comes in when you do the salary equity reviews. Yeah.
So just let me ask you a question. So let's say we pick the matrix that you proposed on page three. And then we go through and we get all the department budgets, and then a couple other departments maybe want to do one-time, what'd you call it, leap? No, it was something with the dirt, with the leaps and. No, it was something with the dirt, with the leaps and-
Yeah.
Come, jumps, anyway, if they come forward, and then at the end of the day, we come in and we say, collectively, those dollars are higher than what we want to budget for, for the entire county, do we come back and then adopt a different matrix?
No, mm-mm. I mean, if, if it's his step, where he wants to go on the step scale, if that is creating too big of an increase, then he needs to go back to his budget and reduce those.
So if he's asking, saying potentially 4.3%, and when the budget's all said and done, it's only going to allow 1.7% or whatever the number is, then there's going to be a redo of the budget. When, how does that work timewise, on the time scale? Because we have to have all this done by our October meeting.
Well, that's, so if you give us the merit matrix today, then by August, they're supposed to have evaluations done by July 31st, so that's kind of the goal, is that by August, we could have preliminary budgets with all the numbers in there for you. And then if they have something other than what you've budgeted for merit matrix, then that's when they would-
Those are hard deadlines. I mean, it's not, hopefully by August, it's by August 10th, we have to have a viewable, approved preliminary budget on the table. That has to go through the August meeting. And then we can always adjust down. So if our preliminary budget comes out high, and some people are uncomfortable with it, and we need to go down in some things, it's probably not going to be salary, we're probably going to be looking at other line items. We just have to have something to move forward with to be able to get it going.
That's an uncomfortable conversation. You, you throw out a preliminary budget that includes a pay scale, and then all of a sudden, at the last minute, it's pulled away from you as an employee. I tell you what, I wouldn't be very-
Well, the pay scale you're deciding on is, is the decision. The pay scale you decide on.
Not if, not if, not if the budget number has to be more than the pay scale difference. So if his budget, Corey's budget needs to be more than X amount of dollars, if your, if your budget's, you know, 3.2 million and you're 4.3, you know, that's 120,000. If we need to, for some reason, cut more than 120,000 out of the sheriff's budget, he's not going to take that all out of cars and gas and all this other kind of things. He's, it's going to also affect all the employees within his department, I would think.
But I think what we're saying is, he's asking for something above and beyond this merit matrix. So that's where he needs to make his changes. It's not on this decision, this policy.
Saying from a management standpoint, it's really bad to dangle the carrot and then pull the carrot away at the last minute.
And I've been in positions in the past where, you know, I've, I've had a big budget to work with, and I've had to be in front of everybody in a, and at the end of the year and say, we're not giving pay raises this next year, as well due to our budgeting issues that we've had or what's come in. But they've still done an annual review, they've, we still looked at their compensation, we still made market adjustments as needed if we needed to with certain individuals, just because you just can't stop. I mean, you've got to keep people progression, you've got to keep them moving. But if it's, it's, if it's across the board for all performers in an organization, that whether you're a low performer or a bad performer, I mean, and it's the same across the border, board for all, is, 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 nobody likes that, that kind of merit.
Yeah, I, I get it, but my point is if we, if we're opening it up and there's justification and logic behind the sheriff's thoughts, are we doing that with all the departments? Are we also opening up road for further conversation?
I was going to ask the same thing, because I have, looking at my matrix, I've got two that need to be moved up into the pay matrix, right? And then one who's in there, or into the bell curve or whatever, and then one that's below it. So if I do evaluations this year, two of them are going to get much less of a raise, but one of them would get more of a raise, and I think they should all be in that market space. And then going forward, decide from there what, what's going to happen.
So I think if something like this needs to be done, it needs to be done as a whole. I mean, dragging it out over years is, is not effective either. So getting people to where they need to be, and then after that, it's, it should be pretty well maintained.
I agree.
Yeah, but you're going to have this conversation every year, I don't really think so, but go ahead.
Joetta, so I know you put some projections together, year over year, what we did last year, and what this matrix, if we picked the one that you had highlighted there, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Where'd that come in?
Yeah.
From a year ago, as far as, we obviously know it's going to be a little bit more than it was over a year ago, but what is that number?
Yeah, I mean, the goal was trying to keep overall salaries, so last year, I think our salaries were at 6.8 million, or maybe that's this year. It's right around 6 million, something. So, I mean, I was just trying to keep a running list of all of our employees under, at 3%, you know? Yeah, so.
But taking into account the merit matrix, since you have those numbers, those projections?
Yes, yeah.
Basically, everybody getting at least a satisfactory?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's basically what it is. I mean, that's what everybody is getting so far that I've plotted. And I, I think maybe what you're referring to is when we were first looking at this merit matrix, I took what they scored last year, and what they would have, what, what their increases were last year and what they would be this year. Okay, yeah. And I think I tried to keep that even, yeah.
And I, and I think some of the discussion I had last year at the, this budgeting time about doing something like this, if, if, if it's something that we're, we don't support and we're not going to do, I don't think evaluation forms should be supported as, either. I mean, they're pointless at that point. So I think, you know, and then when we, if we do have the conversation on what's going to be done for next year, for salary and compensation, that should probably be a Zoom call we're all on, instead of being here in person. So. That's not fun when you're walking out the door after the meeting, so.
Commissioner Claris, to answer your question, if you, maybe Joetta talked a little bit about our evaluation, since we're the ones that have been doing it the longest. Some of them were in the 2.5% to 3. I mean, there was a lot of variation there, and nobody was really, I mean, there wasn't anything-
They were all fully successful, superior.
Right. So far and wide, there wasn't a huge way over 3% thing, and there wasn't anybody that, I mean, there's a lot of, like I said, variation between that 2.5 to 3%.
How many years have you been doing evaluations now?
Almost seven.
So the, the goal was, I mean, we all know what our constraints are, right? At the same time, I think that, I think the merit has merit. I, I really do. I, I think it's, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about that, I think. I'm not sure if every employee is in favor of this, but I think it gives the employees an opportunity to strive a little bit, and be rewarded for good performance. So, and then ultimately, the initial projections were that, you know, what we were looking at was not going to be over the 3%. I mean, this was going to be a blended thing across the board, and probably would be really, really close to our ultimate goal of, you know, keeping this thing around that 3%.
Well, I think part of the annual thing that should be adopted is this entire page. I think this is good work.
I will include that then with the compensation and salary policy. And, yeah, and the salary schedule will be, you know, every year.
And my only challenge with this, with the salary schedule, for example, Burley County is now advertising for a road superintendent, right? Okay, they're posted, road superintendent salary is 75,000 to 85,000. But what it doesn't say in the ad is that county, Burley County has a county engineer, right? So how many other positions are like that? And you and I have shared the position of a auditor in another county, or tax director, or whatever it was. And the published salary was this, and then when you take a deep dive, they're not only doing the auditor, the tax director information, they're also doing this, 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 all this other kind of stuff. And so it's, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying, you know, you get what you get. And so I know you're making every effort to make that as accurate and reflective as possible, but it's, and you'll get people, I know when this is adopted, you're going to get people, they're going to wave that in front of you, and they're going to, you know, want to get a, an adjustment for their particular line.
And I have, I mean, they don't get an adjustment from the salary scale. So nothing comes from the salary scale, except where they are on it. So, you know, it's not so big, maybe that would make it not as big of a deal, but you have to have a median, is all I'm saying, is you have to know the average wage. And like on our salary survey, we try to put if this person has other jobs, you know, because, and, and I have my meetings with the department heads, they come and meet with me, we talk about it, we look at them, they tell me, oh, yeah, they do this, or they do that, or what have you. One thing we did this year is, for the auditor, the sheriff, I think state's attorney, I took any, only the counties over 30 million taxable value, because the smaller counties don't, you know, it, it's just a, they don't pay.
So we've already approved this, the matrix, or did we approve the matrix?
You approved merit pay with the performance evaluation, performance management, yeah. The policy would approve implementing salary ranges and a merit matrix to administer pay, rather than just going through line by line, by line. It's automatic.
And then we, we need a chart. So we need a chart that we can go off of to get the percentages to build, plug them in.
Well, the one in the, what you sent yesterday is really close to the second one from the top in the left column, or am I wrong?
It starts at 2.75.
It would be what?
Three, I think I did about a 2.25, 3.5. I did 0.25 differences for each chart.
Okay, so it looks like chart number, what I would call chart number two.
Yeah, the one-
On the left side.
If you still have that one sheet, it's the one with the star. It's the-
Nope.
Second one down in the, is the one that I was using, in the left column. And, and I can't stress enough, if you choose that one today, and we decide not to go with it, it's fine. Then in August, you can change it. If it's too high.
I'd rather start low and go up.
Well, this, to me, this is starting low.
Well, this is the first time any of us, none of us are experts on implementing the new-
Right, yes.
Restrictions that are potentially laid upon us.
But if it, yeah. I just don't want you to be worried that you're stuck with something.
And nobody's going to call the state legislature, when all this is said and done and they're upset, they're going to call the county commissioners. And so I think we need to do a prudent path on this, and I would much rather surprise them happy than surprise them mad. That's just where I'm at.
Can we just-
Wait, who are you surprising?
Give us some options, give us some options. I mean, can you run the scenario with the first box, the lowest level, and then also the one with the second one, the one that you originally proposed?
The third one's not good enough? Or the, I mean, I thought you wanted to keep it 3% or under was kind of our goal. That's what this one does. I mean, if you go lower than that-
With the one with the star on it?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, well, that's the original email she sent you.
We'd, we'd be closer to two, probably, with the other one. 1.5, I don't know.
No, yeah, I'm good with that second one as well, yeah.
And it's just preliminary. Do you like the general concept of the policy? Okay.
I do. I wish longevity would be part of it. I understand the need to not address it in this.
And we can address that and add it to this policy at some point, with another committee or-
I would keep it separate, I would.
Okay, and policies are meant to be added to and reviewed. So I don't know if anybody'd be in favor if we, I know you're looking at long-term, if maybe we implemented this for a two-year period and, and review it again afterwards, then we'll, we would be able to collect some more data from it and see how it works for our county. So I will make the motion to approve the policy. Do they need to be separate motions? Or can it be all?
I think we should keep them separate.
And does the policy need, and does the policy need all, you wanted this entire sheet of those merit matrix, you wanted that whole thing added to the policy?
Well, I, I'd say whatever we do on the policy that was laid out in front of us, I think we all agree that this is worthwhile to be part of that policy.
We make that an amendment to the policy?
Or an addendum, or whatever you want to call it.
I'll add that page.
I'd second your motion on the policy, Corey.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Claris, to adopt the policy that's at the end of your yesterday's handout, this one, dated 7/25, to include an addendum of the merit matrix budgeting options and the salary schedule grid. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions, discussions? Is, is this any way laying the blueprint for, what it's doing is it's telling department heads what numbers to potentially look at if we adopt this, or is that another motion?
Yeah, when their evaluations come in, I plug the number into their spreadsheet, and then that's what they'll be given, is that.
Any other questions? I do struggle with some of it, but I think the, the good is greater than the bad.
All such foreign, foreign soil we're walking on.
Yeah. Okay, no other discussion, I'll call for a roll call vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for your hard work on this.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, and now, which merit matrix would you like us to budget for in these preliminary budgets? Do you want to start with the one that our committee proposed?
Which is number two.
Yes, I should number them, so we have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking over here. Don't you go picking five of them.
I have it as number two.
And I think, yeah, that's one we spent the most time on.
Okay, thoughts, comments, motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the merit matrix, number two.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Claris. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
That's about what longevity is going to run us for 2026.
Okay.
Thank you again for your work on that.
Thank you. All right.
I don't know if I'm ready for this next one.
Okay, now I got to find my sheet. Okay, so we're going to start preliminary budget discussion, and I'm going to start the discussion, kind of keep it to a couple topics. And we've been asked for, by several community, county projects to be a player and contributor towards them. One is the airport. They've made a formal ask to us for 4 million. The library has made a formal ask to us for 750,000. I think part of our budget discussion would need to see what consensus and what feelings we have on those particular items. We've had a little while- We've had a little while to think about them.
I have one question, so we're, our annual to the library is roughly three hundred twenty-five thousand currently?
To the library?
Yeah.
We are, oh gosh, I have that sheet, yeah, we're, we're under a mill right now for the library because City of Dickinson. City of Dickinson does their mill separately for the library and the airport. And so we were, the library was getting more than the airport. Let me just pull up, done.
I, I guess the crux of my question is, are they asking for seven hundred fifty thousand over and above?
This is for their, this is, this is for their construction project, yes.
I think the library, we, we were giving more than the airport.
And then on the library one, a lot of that goes to the bookmobile, I think, right, that's.
A portion does, but I know that Billings County gives them a direct contribution just for the bookmobile, like a lot of dollars just for the bookmobile.
But I think you're right, Bernie, that our previous past support discussions have been based on the fact that, that
Supporting the bookmobile.
And it goes out to our smaller communities, so.
Part, part, go ahead.
And they were here, it was Keller, was it Keller?
Yeah, yeah.
Was here last meeting that took over the cost of that facility and the, and the add-ons, so.
So maybe we should discuss first now, if it's okay with you, just kind of where we are at revenue track wise for so far this year, and then that maybe will give you an idea. You know, I anticipated revenues to be at about eleven point eight million. Right now, our revenue is in at seven point two five, now this is looking at the general fund. It looks like we were very close on our oil and gas. Our interest income is gonna be a little more than I anticipated, even though that will start dropping down. So we're very on track revenue wise, but our budget already did exceed, I mean, we're gonna be right there, right? It kind of exceeded what our revenue anticipation was to begin with, by a little bit, by about a hundred thousand dollars. But we always, that's if everybody maxed out their budget. And then we did have some transfers, we had the transfer for the small city funding. We transferred a million dollars over to that, we need to transfer two million more so that it's earmarked for that specific project. We are gonna have the IT request that we're gonna have to move over. And I can tell you, even though the airports and the library are asking for funds, they're about one in a dozen right now, cuz they're flowing it for funds. And so do keep that in mind.
Is anybody asking for more than four million?
No, no, they are not.
Well, I think one of the comments that should be made is that, um, you know, the airport made a request of us of four million, the city of four million, Dunn County of two million, I believe, and Billings County of eight hundred thousand. And whatever dollar amount, if any, that we as a county give, uh, you know, a large portion of our tax base is in, within the city limits of Dickinson, and, and so does that affect the thoughts of any of the other commissioners? I think sixty-two percent of our value, if I looked at Natalie's numbers.
And, and I remember asking last year, you know, the, 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 the traffic that flows through the airport. Roughly around seventy percent of it is rotational workers in and out of the, that Dunn County and Billings County definitely benefit from.
Yep, absolutely.
So, uh.
The city did. How, how much of this tax burden are we putting out to citizens of Dickinson, cuz aren't they paying twice in a way?
They wouldn't be because, uh, so that's why that airport for our bucket, the airport, the weed and the library are in a separate bucket is because the city of Dickinson isn't paying.
Yeah, but those are operational dollars, not a capital, right?
What are we, what are we currently levy for the airport?
It's below one mil, the county, now the city of Dickinson levies close to four mils for the airport.
Is this payment that they want, I mean, whatever dollar amount that's discussed or agreed upon here by this board, what's the delivery date of that, those dollars? I mean, do they, if, if, let, let's say it was four million, I mean, do they want a four million dollar check from us like immediately, or how does this work?
Yeah, I think Kelly expressed that, that could be, uh, divided into a couple of years, as long as the money was received by completion of the airport.
Think they're just looking for the, um.
Commitment.
Commitment.
So, last year, the mill that they received, less than a mill, what'd they receive from us last year as a county?
I wanna say it was right around a hundred and, it was a hundred and something thousand? I guess I didn't deep dive into that one individually so much and I don't have it up, do you have it up?
Somewhere, but.
It, it was right under a mil, so, um, well, one, cuz it doesn't include the city of Dickinson, right, that's separate. So it was right under a hundred thousand dollars, I wanna say. From the county, now the ci, the city mill, right, that everybody paid for in Dickinson was almost four mils, so that would have been a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are they really set on the four million, or is it wrong of me to say, why can't we do like two point five?
No, I mean, they, they are, but, I mean, as, as a commission, we can put anything together.
Yeah, they're gonna accept any dollars we want, but I think part of the other discussion was, and the concerns you read the articles, that Hector Airport and Fargo just got a bunch of federal money for their expansion, I believe there was a couple smaller community airports that also received federal money. And it's, I think Minot, I, I could stand corrected, also getting federal money. And Kelly's comment to the federal money idea was, he thought it tied his hands. Well, if it tied his hands in Dickinson, why isn't it tying in the hands in Minot or Fargo or Grant Forks, whoever those communities are? I don't wanna be specific cuz I'm just reading articles, but that, and maybe you know, sitting on the airport authority, what that, why that?
There was, there was some discussion that, that even revolved around like paid parking. If you took so many dollars from certain entities that you can't have paid parking, or for up to twenty-five years.
So when you take federal money, also, are you, all of a sudden you're living under federal guidelines, is, is it driving the cost up some?
Oh, I'm sure it is, yeah, I mean, and there's a difference, you know, I know they've had several different looks at the project and have kind of taken some dollars away from it to try to be within the budget that he wants. I know there was a, a cost of, you know, the parking lots, a, a huge cost in itself too. Where, you know, concrete and asphalt, you know, the, uh, the, the cost of material is pretty close to each other. So, uh, I know they want a, a concrete parking lot, uh, or whatever base it is, but, uh, I think some of the stipulations about being able to generate revenue, when, if you, uh, certain types of revenue when it comes to, uh, accepting them federal dollars. The, the one that sticks out the most is, uh, the paid parking, you know, you can't charge for twenty-five years.
There's market, yeah, federal money and they have paid parking.
They all do.
So I don't know, that was the feedback, and, and that goes back to what you said as well, if these other communities have been able to go, uh, and, and do it.
It kinda seems like the airport just doesn't want the restriction, right, they don't want the restriction to maybe not.
And I haven't had that conversation with them, but that's just the feedback that I've heard when they, when they've spoke.
Well, you think the goal is to maximize dollars and if there's a reason, a legitimate reason not to take the federal connection or restriction, I, I would hope that they're making the.
I, I have concerns with, well, you know, revenue sources, I mean, we talked about that, I mean, we, we get some, well, I mean, some of our revenue is based on oil price, right? Oil prices haven't been exactly, um, super strong. In my involvement in the last two and a half years, I mean, I've become aware of all the needs that we have as a county, uh, that are coming at us. That concerns me, and obviously we're faced with this cap situation, that's a revenue, you know.
And we, we are gonna be paying for significant stuff going on at the LEC. That is, that is definitely coming to this commission.
I know there's been some talk also with the new presidential library, uh, the, the increase of traffic possibly through the airport.
You would hope so.
Yeah.
Well, and just to, uh, jump on what Paul said here, um, you know, there are some things that are gonna be some, some cut off from federal, you read the article this morning where there was some federal dollars after school, you know, programs and those kinds of stuff. I don't know if that's accurate or acc, accurate, inaccurate. My point is, we can't be the fallback for every federal dollar that does not get continued. We are, we're limited, and so we have to do the best we can, and that's why we wanna have this discussion. Part of it would be that the people out there would approach each of us with their thoughts on this as well. But, um, I am a strong supporter of doing the airport, I just think the four million dollars is a huge ask. And, uh, that's, that's fair. So, uh, we'll bring this up again unless there's other comments, but we'll bring this up again at our August meeting. The same way on the library, I, I would like some thoughts and, uh, comments in regarding that as well.
My, my thing, I said on the library board, when it comes time for bills, they're all paid before we, they, they present them to us as paid bills, well, I don't see where that gives us any, I don't know, not control, but, uh, you know, as far as what's, you know, your regular bills like your MGU and your salary and stuff like that, but there's other expenditures that I think should be coming to us to be approved, and they're all approved, granted, I always say nay, but I'm one of three that do that, so. As far as giving them more money at this point, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with it.
I mean, so you're saying if we were to give more money, that there should be a restructuring of how that board operates?
And, you know, Jason Frederick has been sitting on it right now since John Roderman left, and we did have a little discussion about it. But until something is done for more credibility to the way the lo, um, bills are paid, then, then I struggle.
Doesn't the, the city of Dickinson pays, Dickinson Library is under the city of Dickinson, is it not? So they would be paying those at their commission meeting?
While they present them to us, I don't know if they present them to the city, but they present us the list of all the bills that are paid and we're supposed to approve, approve them. Well, they're already paid, so why do I have to approve them?
Maybe it's just information, I guess, uh, cuz they are, they're paid by the city, right?
I think, I'm not sure.
They're under the city's fund.
They're under the city.
The city does all their, uh, bookwork, their accounting bookwork and everything.
Well, I still struggle with it regardless, however it is, it's.
Approving something that's already been paid?
Yeah, there's no reason to approve it.
The library does have a funding mechanism, right, they have that, you know, like DSU has the heritage, I think the library has a foundation as well.
They do, they're giving five hundred thousand dollars to this project.
But as far as operations, the foundation doesn't do a lot towards the operations.
And granted, this is an operations either, but it's still the premises of how they do their bills.
Yep.
So.
So you're on that library board, I mean, this expansion necessary, where you at on it?
I can't say that in my mind it is.
Okay.
Some of the feedback we got at the last, you know, some of the engineering cost, a lot of cost went into doing some erosion control or some soil stabilization underneath that facility. A huge cost did. For the archway or the entryway of the, of the library.
Going back to the library, I mean, I, I'm fully in, or not the library, the airport, I'm, I'm in full support of us having a, a decent airport. I am just not convinced that we needed a fifty-three million dollar airport.
Well, one of the things we also threw out in preliminary discussions was there any, um, in-kind things we could do, such as dirt prep for the parking lot and those kind of things, well, I think they've already awarded those con, particular contracts.
Right, I bet.
I, I think that's what, right, Bernie, at JDA, they, uh, they talked about the contracts which have been awarded, and I thought that was one of them. It's neither here nor there, it's not, but it would be a potential of maximizing, um, some of our contribution, but that's fine, we'll just deal with.
For certain what the, the use of the existing building is out there either, what their plan is for that.
All right, um, anything else on somebody's conversation vision list?
So what I anticipate from this is I am getting a lot of requests and, right? Cuz the federal fu, dollars did, are coming to an end, we have lots of entities that are asking for money. You will have a sheet and information, we can go over it as we go. And I'll send you the information as it comes in on these entities' requests, and they'll be on there, and we're just gonna have to go through them individually and decide which ones, you know, based on the dollar amount and which ones you are interested in.
I think also we need to look at.
The county on what, what they are, you know?
Cuz there's a lot of them.
I think another thing we need to look at, there are some entities that we gave money to that didn't come before us.
Some of them didn't come before us, but they sent in their proposal. If you want every entity to come before you, then you need to let me know, cuz then.
Okay.
They, some of them are willing.
Yeah, okay, but I think that, you know, when we're tightening up on a budget though, and, and trying to making sure that, you know, I don't know how many, we, we didn't have, didn't seem like we had a, a ton though last year or the year before. I mean, there's one, I think, for Dolly Parton's.
We took off that one last year.
Last year, but we had it on previous years.
We did, yeah.
Her, her charity, yeah, well, my wish in that regard would be that we need to look at them collectively, not individually because if we let them piecemeal in, then we say, oh, this is a good one, and then all of a sudden we run out of money and the good ones don't get funded, so.
Right.
You know, at one point we said we should have a deadline of, of asks for contributions for the following year, I don't, we haven't really followed it that tight, but it would be nicer if we could do that.
I think I, I got, if you guys see on here, I did get, start getting a chunk of them, some of them we don't get anything, you know.
You've received so far this year alone?
For asks?
Yeah.
Well, like, for example, domestic violence, they got some of their federal funding cut, so they didn't ask for a specific dollar amount, but they said that they would like more than what they got last year. A lot of my letters are looking like that, just so you know.
Just asking for more, but not a, a number.
Some of them will do, like, they're just saying they would like an increase, but they're not throwing out there what it is, if you have anything. It, it's gonna be, I, I anticipate that for many of them, I think Community Action had some decreased in funding as well, is that correct, Dean?
Pretty major, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's still, some of it still hasn't come through, whether exactly is it gonna be cut officially, but yeah, there's some talk of it. Some of the programs are being cut, probably quite a bit.
So I have a feeling that they're gonna need or want more. Vision West, is that something we wanna continue? There's those questions, right? You aspire, we just kind of started doing that one not too long ago. I don't know about the Richardson Healthcare Foundation, what do we actually pay for with Richardson Healthcare Foundation, does anybody know?
Well, it's the, uh, foundation that supports the operations of the healthcare unit over there, and I think originally, the concept there was that, I, I was none of the board at the time, but, uh, to allow facilities like that to continue to function to take the pressure off the ones, uh, you know, not so everything's over, you know, because at that point, like St. Ben, St. Luke's, were all over capacity and, um, so. At minimum, we should get a report from them, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think they usually send like a letter, right?
But I mean, like, revenue expenses, what did, what did the contribution, what'd they, what'd they do with the money?
Yep. We visited about that once before.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions? Okay, thank you, uh, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner White, second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Franchuk, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you. Same sign, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you.